It's supposed to be.
I'm here today. No, it's not here. It's all like my dad was here.
To try to take it down.
On Saturday.
Nope.
We need some more acid. We shouldn't have been.
They say water.
All right, I just wanted to know.
P O T W.
They don't care their title.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we good? All right, welcome to our city council meeting for tonight, March 10th, 2021. We will begin this evening with an invocation by President Vance Smith from the Cross Hollow State and then have the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Hartley.
Our beloved heavenly Father, we're thankful this day for all the blessings thou has given us and for thy hand in our lives. We're grateful for the freedom which allows us to self-govern and to be here under these circumstances. And pray a blessing upon our country and upon our community that those freedoms will continue and continue to prevail. We're grateful for the storms that are headed our way and the replenishment that it brings in terms of the moisture that we badly need. We pray we'll continue to receive that, the water that we need in our community, that our aquifers will be renewed and that we will have the water we need to sustain us. Grateful for thy tender mercies in all aspects of our life and many, we're mindful that many are affected by the pandemic and the circumstances associated with that. We pray that those that are suffering will be strengthened and helped and that the pandemic will come to an end so that we may regain all of the aspects of our lives that we would like to regain and we are grateful for thy help thus far and for a blessing which has been with us in our communities. We're grateful for the good people of this community, for the heritage which is ours and those that have gone before and sacrificed for us. And we pray a blessing will be in this land, in this valley, that those that live here will have peace and joy and that they will get along with one another, will have peace and love in our neighborhoods. We pray for the city and those that guide it, that they will be directed and helped in all things, that they will be guided and directed by thy hand. And that the employees of the city, both professional and volunteer and those that serve, will be blessed with all that they need and we're grateful for their service and sacrifice in our behalf. Grateful for this city council, for our mayor, for the attorneys, for all those that are here today and as we meet today. We pray that thy spirit will be with us and that, again, that civility and peace will prevail, that we'll be able to express ourselves and our views in respectful and kind ways and that we will be able to achieve the results that will be best for all involved. Again, we're to express our gratitude for thee and for those that serve us in this community and pray that they will be blessed for their efforts and for their sacrifices. And we, again, express our appreciation for the gift of our freedoms and for thy son and for his sacrifice. May we emulate him in all that we do is our prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Presidents Smith and Terry. We will now move on to our agenda order approval. One item is, item number four is not a Watson Engineering project, so we just need to have that corrected. And other than that, are there any other items the council would like changed from the published agenda? And if not, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda as outlined with that one change noted.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to council business.
Mayor, I'd like to just say one thing and it's important as we come on the one-year anniversary of this pandemic that has struck the world and affected every one of us. We in this city have gone through the days where our dear colleagues down below were sitting up here with us, to sitting in Heritage Theater with no attendees, to being on Zoom meetings for several meetings. But through it all, I know that our staff and you, Mayor, have urged that the city business continue and that we worked hard to try and get back into in-person meetings so we could carry on the business of the city. And I'm really thankful and honored to be in a community where we've worked hard with our Chamber of Commerce, with the university, with the tourism office, with economic development to try and get businesses reopened in April after they were shuttered. And it's been a long process for all of us, but I just wanted to acknowledge and thank you, Mayor, and the city staff for the leadership you provided to all of us to help us get through it. And we do have light at the end of the tunnel. We're not there yet, but we see light at the end of the tunnel. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's been a team effort over this past year. Are there any other council comments? As you all know, the legislative session ended. There passed over 400 bills, something like that. And so, there will be a number of items as they get sifted through and the governor signs what he's going to sign that will impact our cities. And so, those will, will kind of keep you apprised as we know what is getting signed and what is getting vetoed and how that all kind of shakes out in the end. And last week was exciting as our Cedar High men's basketball team won the state championship. We've also had two SUU sports win their Big Sky Championship, men's basketball and cross-country, and their coaches were both recognized as coaches of the year. And so, we, with everything else going on in the world and sports not being able to be played in so many different states and areas, it's nice that not only are they being able to be played here, but we're beating everyone, so. And we will move on to staff comments. Seeing none, I didn't think there were any. All right, we will move on to the business agenda, the public comment portion. If you hear about an item not on the agenda, now is the time to come and make your comment and say your name.
Oh, I'll try. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Carter Wilkie, I come to you tonight with my position as the president of the Board of the Friends Board of the Children's Justice Center of Iron County. We're moving forward with our events this year. I just wanted to let you all know, the first of which is our Fun Run, which is scheduled for May 15th at 8:00 a.m. Registration will start at 7:00 a.m. that day out in front of the Children's Justice Center. So, we would love to invite you all to come out and bring your families. And we will obviously do what we can to work with protocols and things and we're looking at different ways of doing that, alternating the way that we normally do things to try and help out. And, but, yes, so, we're on the schedule. It's planned. We hope that you can all come. And then, we're also moving forward with our golf tournament later in the year in September. And also, the return of our Dancing With The Stars is scheduled for November. We've got that on the books over at the Heritage Center. And so, hopefully, as long as things continue to progress with COVID, that we should be able to have a full house once again. And if you see one of us calling you, maybe don't answer your phone because that means it might be your turn to dance this year, right? Councilwoman Hartley, you know what that's like. So, yeah, so just wanted to, just wanted to come out, personally invite the, this year, the Fun Run on May 15th, like I said, our theme is red, white, and blue. So, it's going to be a very patriotic run, so we hope that you can all join us that day. Thanks.
Carter, excuse me, did that run get canceled last year?
It did. Yep, so it got canceled last year. We did move forward with the golf tournament and then we canceled the Dancing With The Stars.
Yeah.
We were fortunate enough that we were able to actually apply for some CARES Fund. Since we are a nonprofit, we were able to apply for some of that money through the county and be awarded some of that money that we needed to replace those, you know, the income that was lost from those events or the revenue that was lost from those events. So, that was, we were really grateful for that. Of course, we thank the city and the county for all that that they did. So, last year's behind us and 2021 is here. We're moving forward and we're really excited, so, thanks.
Thank you. One other thing, since I'm running the meeting, I can go back. Next week, I remember the Chamber of Commerce Awards Banquet, I think tickets are still available. That is next Thursday. And our Cedar City Star Search event that our events department has been working on is next Friday.
The 19th.
And that one, more seats have been opened up and tickets are available for that as well, both on that event at the Heritage Theater. So, put both of those on your calendar as well. Okay, now we're back. Sorry about that.
How are you guys? So, Sarah, and I'm here actually with my business, so Paul's Higgins. So, I was approached by the Livestock Festival Board.
Sarah, will you bring the microphone closer?
Sorry, I usually have a loud voice.
And before the mayor interrupts you, she'll need your last name too.
Sarah Rigel. With Policy Kings Brewery. So, I was approached by the Livestock Heritage Festival Board with a little bit of an event and I'm trying to ask if it's something that can be possible. So, they asked if Policy Kings could be brought on as a vendor for the Livestock Heritage Festival on the Saturday event and have Hosted Beer Garden out at the arena. I didn't know if that was an option before I submit everything, so I wanted to bring it here to see if that was going to be an issue.
Beer Garden's not an issue. We do those throughout the year. Let us please check on the location.
So, that, the location is out at the Diamond Z Arena. And so, I'm trying to see if that is an option because I know it's city-owned.
So, that's what we need to check on, is whether we can do it on city property. I think we can, but I'm not sure. I know in the past when we've had them down by the park, we've went across the street by the Elks Lodge. So, that's why I'm hesitating. So, please let us check on that. We can give you a call.
Okay, and I have a question. So, do you guys own the land where the July Jamboree is held? Right here where they do the, the actual beer garden right here? Who is, who owns that land?
Where do they do it?
Don't they?
Right in the, right, right where Charlie's used to be.
I thought they do the beer garden down by Charlie's and by.
In that parking lot?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's why I brought it because they wanted me to come and ask if that was an option.
Yeah, we'll get back in, one of us will follow back up with you. Does that work?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you much. Okay. Is there anyone else for public comments? No? Okay, then we will move on with our public portion of our agenda with the consent agenda. Item number one, approval of minutes dated February 17th, 19th, and 24th, 2021. Approval of bills dated March 8th, 2021. Approved vicinity plan for 4B Ranch subdivision phase two located at approximately 4450 West 1600 South. Approved vicinity plan for Lakeview Townhome PUD located approximately 750 South Cove Drive. Approved vicinity plan for Diamond K PUD located at 280 West, 2100 North. Approved granting a letter denying annexation for property located at 165 West, 3000 North. Approved the purchase of factor sewer cleaning truck. Approved airport funding for COVID-19 through the CCSAA. COVID virus, coronavirus response and relief supplemental preparations act. Approved grant from Iron County TRCC for a new sign at the front of the airport terminal. Approved Iron Garfield Beaver County Task Force in our local agreement.
Move to approve the consent agenda items.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We will now move on to the action agenda. See, aren't you glad you got to stay? With item number 11, vicinity plan for Old Sorrel Townhome PUD located approximately 540 South Cross Hollow Road.
Good evening, Council. Tim Watson with Watson Engineering. Last we discussed, this was on the consent agenda, so I guess that there are a few questions that we need to answer tonight.
Well, I think, I was the one to have it moved, asked to have it moved from consent to action. And it's just that we like to have you up here, Tim. We look forward to your pontifications. They always enlighten us as we go along. But I, what I wanted to, what I wanted to address, and I speak for me, I am supportive of this particular thing and I am likely to vote in favor of it. But what I, what I wanted to talk about was the process and I'm not, I'm not telling you what you don't already know, but developers come and they have a grand vision for what they want to create in a community and they try and get all the stakeholders involved in it. And I have to say, when I first saw the concept and the renderings and listened to the Armbers talk about Old Sorrel Ranch, it was a very exciting prospect for our community, I thought. Thought it provided some different changes for us. I thought it provided some elevations in some of the design and things. And I know in talking with you and others that perhaps some of the shortcomings in some of those developments are on the city's side. And if we have shortcomings that we need to work with to provide better amenities, that's something we need to work on. But I have to say that when I saw this come across the boards and came to us, I was disappointed. I was disappointed in its, in its overall design and the fact it was in mixed use. I was the understanding that we would have some more commercial entities in this mixed use thing along with the development. That could certainly be my mistake in it, but that's what I envisioned. Because what I see in this mixed use, the only mixing we're going to get probably is the people walking on that public trail mixing with the neighbors that don't have a fence behind their place. That's the only mixed use I think we're going to get out of it. But I just wanted to say that I hope as we proceed ahead with the Armbers and the rest of this Old Sorrel project, we can really keep in mind the overall vision of what, what you and others brought to us.
So, what, this, this property's been zoned mixed use for quite a while, so that's why I'm trying to, I'm having a tough time wrapping my head around kind of the intent there. We do have the parcels to the north. Jonathan, could you pull up the, an aerial map? So, we do have parcels to the north that are currently zoned mixed use, but because of the change to the mixed use ordinance, we are not allowed to do anything in that area without having commercial on the main floor, the ground floor. And if, if, if you recall, we had, that portion of the property came back twice to the city council for a rezone because it was first denied because of the amount of, if you will, townhomes or higher density that was going in, in the area. And as we discussed it, and my understanding is that that was one of the items that triggered some of the changes to the mixed use zone. So, again, this parcel right here, there's, there's approximately 30 acres north of the Swiss Bed and Breakfast between that and the Diamond Z Arena. This currently is on mixed use, but it cannot be developed as residential unless there's, we meet the requirements for the commercial on the main floor. But this 16 acres here has been mixed use for quite some time. And if you calculate out the, the density of that with 201 is what we're currently showing, townhomes over 16.3 acres, we are equivalent to an R2 density at 12.5 units per acre. So, I guess that that's one of the things that I don't understand, Councilman Phillips, is, is it the density that's the issue or is it the, the appeal and the aesthetics of what we're presenting to the city at this point?
Well, it just doesn't look like it's mixed use. It is strictly residential.
Okay, and at the time, again, at the time that was allowed in the mixed use.
I recognize it. That's why I'm saying I'm, I'm, I'm likely to support it, but I just, I just don't want us to lose sight of what that overall vision for Old Sorrel Ranch is because I still think it could be a premier development for our community and when you develop the hundreds of acres that are out there.
And I think it will. If you look at the, if you go back and look at the emails that were sent out as far as the master plan that's going to go in that area, we're going to do everything that we possibly can to preserve the hilltops and add additional trails at the expense of the developers into something that the public will be able to use in that area. Several weeks ago, we had the opportunity to tour the land with, with the Armbers family and some others that they invited in to look at it. And having the opportunity to ride up over those hilltops and see what that's going to look like, I don't think that there's going to be a whole lot of change. Again, the, the potential density for the 450-plus acres is only a fraction of what should be, that will be going in there. I don't think that there will be any other development in the area that'll be close to that. So, I hope that the city would also look at, because we are trying to preserve as much of the open space as we possibly can, that they would in turn allow some higher densities to make the offset actually work. But again, this portion of the 16 acres has always been, I shouldn't say always, it's been for quite some time now zoned mixed use. We do have some industrial commercial down here along the overhead power and again, commercial in this area. We also have a portion of the airport, a flight, airport approach zone that encumbers the property, so no residential development will be able to go in there. So, we're trying to do the best we can with the need that is currently at the city's, you know, off-ramps, whatever you want to call it, that's bringing that in. Commercial right now is, for some reason, hasn't caught up to some of the residential. We're starting to see a little bit around town, but there's, again, my understanding, a portion of that is the number of rooftops that we have in, in certain areas. Why commercial areas won't, won't, won't come in. My understanding also with that is that as Associated Foods was looking at some stuff out in the Enoch area, Mid Valley, Minersville Highway, again, they did not have enough rooftops to justify some of that. So, the commercial will come once the rooftops are in and we're seeing more of those rooftops being built at this point. So, I hope that there's enough patience and, and understanding or patience is probably just the best word to use with the development that as those rooftops come in, the commercial will eventually make it. But at this point, we haven't seen that yet.
Thank you.
Tim, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Since we took you off the consent agenda, I can, how, did you have your opportunity to meet before the Board of Adjustments?
Not yet. Nope. That'll be next month in April.
And that's, that's for the variance on the wall, correct?
Yep.
So, and as part of that variance, I mean, you know, Councilman Phillips gave me a great idea last week, why you could make that portion of the walking trail a free-range chicken area too, like a petting zoo, you know? So, they, so you could get a variance there.
Did I miss that part? I don't recall that. I'll have to go back and read the.
You shouldn't leave meetings early.
I'm sorry, yes.
Tim, do you have a contingency plan if you don't get the variance?
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll put a fence up. I mean, there, there's not really much we can do, Mayor.
I know that.
The ordinance doesn't allow for too many other opportunities for us to, to make modifications. But again, we'll, we'll visit with the Board of Adjustments and see what they say. The city wants open space and, and we're trying to accommodate that, especially in hillsides that are, I don't want to say that are undevelopable, but they make developing difficult. And so, we're, we're trying to do the best that we can with the development and accommodate the, the overall feel and, and foresight that the, the Armbers family had back in the 70s when they purchased this property.
And you don't have to answer this. Are the Armbers going to continue on with the rest of the development or is it going to potentially or being sold to a different party? Will there be a consistent fill throughout that whole area or is it going to be piecemealed?
Okay, so.
That was another way of asking the same question?
Yes, yes, and I'm trying to figure out the best way to, to answer that.
Does it depend on our decision on streetlights?
It totally does depend upon the. No, I know that there have, they have been, just like the commercial, they're always talking to different people. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we came in because we had to do a minor lot. Rally Stop is buying a chunk of land to, to build a store. As far as the residential goes, I know the Armbers are moving forward. They've got phase two and phase three that are under construction now and we are in the process of designing the rest of the Westview side of Old Sorrel Ranch. And so, if, if developers come in to buy that, I don't know what their plan is. I know that there have been discussions whether they are purchasing the, the final lots, just like they did in phase one, individual contractors coming in, or if they buy the remainder and develop the, develop it themselves, I'm not sure. But I do know that the Armbers are holding very tight to the overall concept and CC&Rs that they have put in place, both commercial and residential, to try to keep the same feel all the way through. Does that answer your question without answering your question?
You could be a lawyer.
No, heavens no. I think my mom would kick me out of the house.
Yeah, just talking around in circles and, yeah, that was a very good explanation with no explanation.
There is a possibility, but I don't know of anything yet.
You could have just said that.
That's all right. I get paid by the number of words I use. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Well, thank you for your explanation on that and thank you, Councilman Phillips. I echo a lot of the same sentiments so, that he expressed. So, thanks for the explanation. I did have one other question. If there's 200 units in there, you do show two access. Do these qualify under the 80 units per access out onto a main highway? Does there need to be more on that or does that all get ironed out later on?
So, my understanding is that once you get to 80 units, you have to have two access points. I don't know of anything and.
Is it like every 80 or that you have to have another one or not?
Maybe that's more of a question for Jonathan than it was for me.
Okay, that answers it then. Thank you.
And the bit going to the north is going to connect later or what's the deal there with that little T off? Is that?
So, again, there was a private, there's a private ingress egress access between the Swiss Bed and Breakfast and this mixed use unit. When it was parceled out and we did lot line adjustments on it, I want to say back in 2016, we put that in there because again, we weren't sure what was going to develop. And that was, they wanted to make sure that they reserved the right to have additional streets coming off Cross Hollow Road if they needed to for parking lots and whatever else. We are in the process right now and we have an agreement with the Swiss Bed and Breakfast to vacate that access so that, that will, that easement will go away and this will terminate somehow. We do, because we do have frontages along there with the townhomes, we do have to have something.
Some kind of cul-de-sac or?
Hammerhead cul-de-sac, something.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. You're right.
We can definitely do that.
But that's just a private agreement that does not require any of the council.
Yes, that is correct. I've already visited with Mr. Romerall about that. Any other questions that I can answer tonight?
I move that we approve the vicinity plan for the Old Sorrel Townhomes PUD.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time tonight.
See, we're so glad that you had this opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Just remember. All right, final plot for the Valley at South Mountain subdivision phase one located at 3350 West South Mountain Drive.
Yes, my name's Joel Hanson and I'm one of the owners of this project.
So, as Mr. Hanson stated last week, the city received that letter of credit the next day on Thursday, so there's no legal reason why this can't move forward and be approved.
Thank you, Tyler.
Make a motion to approve the final plot for the Valley at South Mountain subdivision phase one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You, see, you need to remind, I was going to say, you need to point out, Tim, that's item number 13 in ordinance amending chapter 32 concerning streetlights and subdivisions.
So, just quick review of what we talked about last week. A month, a month and a half ago, this matter kind of came up with the Old Sorrel phase that you didn't have to put in subdivisions if, or sorry, you didn't have to put. that you didn't have to put in subdivisions if, or sorry, you didn't have to put in streetlights if you had CCNRs recorded. The council members at the time were a little concerned about that. The direction staff was given was to change that to require streetlights, so we put together just a simple change. But I believe there's been some further discussion by council members on that, so...
So I just want to make sure that after some discussion, there was a clarification that came out of, I believe, the planning commission that for the PUDs, they would be required also unless there was prohibited by their CCNRs. Is that correct?
Which is essentially, the policy that's currently in place would stay in effect for PUDs, but would no longer be for city subdivisions.
Correct.
And I had a little soapbox last week, and I apologize, and, well, I don't, I apologize for the length, but not for the topic, because, anyway, it's, but I, in talking to, to others, I, I would, I would like to at least allow another way, rather than just simply requiring streetlights every 450 feet-ish. Is that about right, Jonathan?
450, yes.
Yeah, so rather than simply requiring that everywhere, especially where we try to say, oh, this is a dark sky, we have a dark sky area, and this is our asset, and then, oh, by the way, by law, we're going to make everybody have streetlights against their will, when a lot of residents of those areas don't want it and have said they prefer it, and are, many of our more, especially the more affluent neighborhoods don't have them and don't want them. It's, it's interesting then that we would modify that. So I, I had proposed perhaps an alternative that if we're, that they would be, rather than simply require across the board, allow other options. So if, if the CCNRs prohibit regular streetlights in a subdivision, but they either have illuminated address numbers in front of each unit with, within, say, 25 feet of the right-of-way, or lamp posts, or just only require streetlights on the collector roads, but not in all areas of the subdivision. You know, I'd like to at least see that kind of an option, rather than just this blanket policy that applies to everybody no matter what. And I'd like to see what my fellow council members think about that. I sent some language to Tyler Romerall. He helped me fix some issues with it, but I don't know how my fellow council members feel about that kind of an option.
Well, I do think, for me, and I expressed this early on, that I think public safety is really important, the ability to identify in the case of emergencies and, and if there's accidents out there. But I do believe, because I looked in section 32, and I couldn't find a definition of streetlight. We define everything else, and so I don't know what the definition is of a streetlight. I know we all have visioned in our head.
You have to look at the engineering standards.
I did look at the engineering standards, and there's three types. There's a, if I, if I was in the right place, there's a commercial, there's an industrial, and then there's a residential streetlight. But it shows one streetlight, it shows the height, it shows the amount of lumens to give out, but there's all kinds of other alternatives. I think there's, you know, there's bollards, there's way to, to light different things. So what I, what I would be interested in looking at, is maybe along the same lines as Councilman Melling, is that we do require streetlights, but that, that determination of what is a streetlight could be chosen from an option, depending on what is approved. Maybe there's four varieties, I don't know how many that is, but it isn't just one standard that we look at. But it's something that is clearly identified, you can do this, 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 or this, but you have to do one of those.
So are you just, this is all restricted to residential subdivisions?
Correct.
Is that the scope of our discussions?
Correct.
Or are we talking commercial or industrial right now?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking residential.
Okay. So you just, the idea is to put together a menu, or maybe we put together something that says we want this much lighting, ambient lighting, and developer, you figure out how to do it? Is that the idea?
Well, yeah, I, I don't want staff to be caught in the middle. I want to make sure that when a developer comes in, they have the opportunity to say, okay, we want to do this, and we, we're in the hills, and we want this kind of thing. So what we're proposing is, we want to go with option D, because it gives us the best dark skies, yet it'll still illuminate the sidewalks, it'll still let you see the house number, whatever that is. So I'm just wondering if there's ways that we can explore that and not abandon not having street lighting, but there's lots of ways to look at street lighting. So, so I guess what I'd, I'd like to find out is if there's a way that we could look at this ordinance and perhaps approve with the understanding that staff would move forward and then come up with several options for residential street lighting.
So...
Ryan, do you want to come?
I'm just, Ryan Marshall, Public Works Director. I just want to caution, if we start giving a lot of different options, and we have a lot of different styles of streetlights up there, to maintain that and keep the inventory for that is going to become pretty burdensome right now.
Okay.
Right now, we have our contracts where we have, we require them to keep so much in stock of the streetlight that we do define, so that when we're repairing that, if you've got a choice of five or six, they're going to have to keep that much in stock of each one of them, and it just gets a little expensive and kind of confusing on maintaining.
Okay.
Please understand also that if you, if the city chooses to, say, you got to have something within 25 feet of the, within the front setback, we're not going to maintain any of that.
No, I understand.
So, we'll just maintain what's in the right, the public right of way.
Of course, of course.
We have to.
You're going to anyway, so come on up.
Good evening, Tom Jett. I remember when this was initiated a couple months ago, and prior to that, there was some language that said, certain subdivision forms did not have to have them. One that comes to mind is residential estate zones did not have to have streetlights, or curb and gutter and so forth. Does this apply to residential estates in, or does, in addition to standard subdivision, non-residential estates, are the, are, are all subdivisions, regardless, with the exception of PUDs, have the requirement that they shall be installed?
So the current ordinance, Tom, says that all subdivisions shall have streetlights unless your CCNRs specifically include them. The proposal on the board says all subdivisions have to have streetlights. In a PUD, if you don't want to have them, then put it in your CCNRs. Mr. Melling and Mr. Phillips are putting a new suggestion in to try to do some different variations on streetlights, but it has nothing to do with whether it's RE or R1 or R2. It's just all sort of, all residential subdivisions.
Well, I could see Ry, the Public Works Director, Ryan, his concern with regard to having a multitude of, of choices, that gets a little bit confusing after a while. Good idea, but it, it, it could cause some grief. Some consistency is really nice in the community, so, but thank you for clarification.
I think the wording the way it is is fine for this, for the ordinance itself that addresses it, because everything we're talking about here refers to a definition of streetlights and what they are, which are addressed in the engineering standards, so that's another topic of discussion unrelated to this, in my opinion.
Well, and I guess, Mr. Bittman brought up a point that I'd, I'd just like to clarify on kind of my position here. I, I, I don't think the city should be maintaining more than one kind of light, because that's going to be a huge pain. But I do think we should allow an option for, we're clearly residents like these darker areas, and those who live in the areas without them are asking for them to stay that way. And I clarify now, this is only new subdivisions, but, but if, if people want that, why should we say, no, that's too bad, we, you have to have lit streets? And, and, you know, people like dark skies, they want to see the Milky Way. If, if that's what they want, I could understand it on bigger streets, or, you know, extremely higher density, or commercial areas, or industrial, or whatever, but I, you know, and as a former pizza delivery driver who tried to find houses in the dark, it was hard sometimes, but the, and that's why I'm thinking, rather than on the public side saying that we have to, you have to install something that we're now going to maintain in perpetuity, that if that's, if you don't want that, that's fine, and then just privately in your covenants, have some kind of backlit street number or something else as an identifier. If, if that's the public safety issue we're worried about, if we're worried about people tripping on the sidewalks, we should stop people from walking on the sidewalks in the dark, period, because the streetlights are not quite bright enough ever to make it totally safe. There's always going to be issues. If we're worried about crime, the data show that, that some crimes are deterred by streetlights, but it's also easier to identify your targets, so unless it's a public housing project in New York City, it's a wash. So I, I, I just, no matter what the issue, I think as, if, if we take it as it's written, it's going to cause issues, and I, I, I would just like to see at least some kind of exception where, you know, if you have a, a lit house number or something in your covenants, that your covenants could prohibit the standard streetlights. But, so that's where I'm at on that issue.
Well, that would have to be up to the developer, though, if they're going to do backlit numbers and things on the houses. That's, that's not the city's responsibility.
Right, it's on the, in the covenants, and that's what we're saying in here, that this, this says you have to build streetlights to city standard unless your covenants prohibit it. And we can also say, you know, unless your covenants prohibit it and have a provision about illuminated house numbers within a certain distance of the right-of-way. You know, again, that's just the, if, if, if the exception is based on covenants, and then, then that can just be one required provision if you're going to have that exception in your covenants, and then, then they manage it, and the city's out of their hair.
But I agree with Councilman Adams. I do think it's a matter of definition on street lighting, because I think the ordinance is very clear, it's just a matter of what constitutes a streetlight. And I do know that we had concerns from both our fire department and our police department about public safety and the ability to identify homes and locations in the case of emergencies and crime, so I think we're on the right track here, and I think we should continue to work on what that street lighting is and see what we can come up with, and, and acknowledge the concerns that our Public Works Director identified, because it's a real concern. But I also recognize, and I see Mr. Hanson standing back there, that the kind of development he's doing, he appreciates those dark skies, and I want to try and support that, but I also want to make it safe. And so that's where the dilemma comes.
And I, I guess, again, it's, it's not a safety issue.
It is a safety issue, Councilman.
I mean, is, is the safety issue identifying the house? Is that, what, what is the safety issue we're concerned about? That's, that's what I'm really, because we do a lot of things in the name of public safety when the data don't show that it affects public safety except in our emotions. And I, and I get it, that a lot of things are based on feelings, but what does the data show us, and what do our experts say? And so I, I don't want to put any staff on the spot, unless they really want to, but, but is the safety concern identifying houses, because there are less restrictive means to do that? Or is the safety concern that, you know, that predators are going to lurk in the dark? What, what is the safety concern other than identifying the, the homes?
May I address that? It's people walking on sidewalks, it's people identifying the homes, it's people walking their dogs, it's any number of things.
And you can illuminate a sidewalk in a variety of ways. I lived in a community where all we had were backlit number signs, and, and our streets were very passable. I mean, we could walk and enjoy them, so there are alternatives.
Right.
But that lies in the engineering standards, I don't think it lies in this...
Correct.
Well, and, but to clarify, a change to the engineering standard, I think, implies city maintenance in perpetuity, whereas a change to this part of the ordinance deals with the covenants.
Not if it's defined as being 20 feet setback or something like that. We have no, as was mentioned, we have no responsibility for maintenance of that lighting.
Right.
So, I mean, we could very, very well constrain it to one single type of streetlight, right? If you're going to put it up on a pole with alternatives available that would light the street otherwise, so...
So are, are there options then in the ordinance, when, if we change the engineering standard to what a streetlight is, regarding what a streetlight is in certain situations? Is that the place to do it? And is there a private maintenance option of those, or are these, or is that only for the publicly maintained infrastructure?
Just asking, Tyler, I think we can go in our engineering standards and set out residential areas, here's what you need to put in if it's going to be publicly maintained, which is what we have in there now, right?
Right.
And then I have a next section that says, if you don't want to do the publicly maintained option, and you want to have it back on your property, here's, here's what we need, here's the criteria you need to design around. I don't even know if we would be likely to call out specific types, but we would just say, here's what we need to see in far as lighting, and then let the market...
Figure out.
Figure out what, because I don't know all the options, and let them creatively figure out whatever fits. I think that would work in the engineering standard.
No, because you're going to have to define each use, because, I mean, a, a light on a house number on a house is not going to eliminate this, or illuminate the street.
Right.
Sorry, but it's not.
Right, and that's why I asked the, what is the concern?
That's why I think streetlights are important, you know, in areas for that reason, and, you know, if you look all over town, and, and I agree, there's going to be some people in a particular subdivision that, you know, maybe they don't like them, you know, for example, but when it gets to that point, that the engineering's all done, and the development's put in, and people are buying lots, that's already going to be decided. They can't take a, a poll in and say, do you want, do you want streetlights in our subdivision or not?
Right.
Because I'll bet if you did, you'd find, you know, that it's, it's very positive, is what I'm, I'm seeing, because I look at it in, you know, in our subdivision, and I have people contact me all the time that want more than what we have, which is the minimum city standard. But anyway.
Sorry, Darren Adams with the Police Department. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I, I think Chief Phillips and I made our, our concerns clear. I wasn't going to get up, but just a couple of, of issues, and then I'll just opine briefly. Councilman Melling is correct. I'm not aware of any studies out there, and we certainly don't have any that would indicate that, that lighting deters crime. I mean, anecdotally, we believe that it does. We're concerned when we go into neighborhoods where there's dim lighting or none at all. The illuminated addresses, I think for us are absolutely, without a doubt, you know, have to be there. However, we, we have equipment, we have lights on light bars, we have high-powered spotlights. When we go into a neighborhood and we're looking for an address, that we can find those, it takes a, you know, a bit longer if they're not illuminated, but, but it does cause concern if you have a completely black subdivision where people can lurk. And again, it's, that's not proven, but, but we've seen calls, calls after, or call after call where we've caught somebody who's, chose to, to lurk in those areas. And so the idea of those along the main thoroughfare at the entrance of a subdivision, I think are important. It would be nice to even see some interspersed throughout, even if they're minimal, to, you know, try to maintain that dark sky, but also try to provide some illumination. And to your point, Ron, you may have neighbors who, who move in thinking there may be some, of course, they're going to, you know, buyer beware, and then think, well, I wanted more illumination, so just, just our two thoughts, or our two cents, rather.
And what's your opinion on the curbs? You know, we've, over the years, we've had different, well, it used to be a lot of Eagle Scout projects come along and paint our curbs with illuminated numbers, and when you hit them with your lights, you can see them.
Those are great, anything.
And that, that avoids extra street lighting, but identifies the address.
Even those today where, where housing standards change and developers get creative and want to put something that matches the vinyl siding, that's, that becomes difficult for us without the light on it, and even then, if it's gold on gold, it makes it tough. So curb stands out, black with a white background or illumination is really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Council, with all of this information?
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance the way it's written. If we want to address the standards later, that's another topic. So I'll make that motion that we approve this the way it's written.
I'll second that.
Okay. Where this is an ordinance, we have a motion in a second. We will start with Councilman Adams.
Aye.
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 Name.
Aye.
So this passes five to one, or four to one? There's only five of you. Four to one.
But we do want to make sure that we continue to work on coming up with those standards.
Yep.
Got that on the list, Jonathan?
Yeah, I got, I got that. Thank you.
Not that you have-
Added it to his to-do list.
Okay. Item number 14, a resolution amending the city's strategic plan.
I move to approve the resolution amending the city's strategic-
I will second that motion.
All right. We will start with Councilman Ison.
Aye.
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 All right. That passes five zero. Item number 14, MJB Cedar City LLC Development Water Issues.
So we gave you the basics of the, of the concern last week, and we asked for two things. We asked, one, that we'd be okay to go ahead and sign a partial declaration so that a minority, a number of folks could move along with their plans, and we would work things out with MJB as we go along. In your packets, there was a listing of the minority owners. The highest owner had eight acre feet. Everybody else had an acre foot or two acre feet. And they were typically, I think, all but one of them were families. So that's the one request. The other request is that you okay us going out and getting our own expert to review the proposed declaration, the basis for it, and also provide us options on, on how we, as a city, could proceed with the possible declaration and keep ourselves in the same position as we were before the declaration. In that regard, we talked to two experts over the, well, I talked to two experts over the interim. One was Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter is retired from the Division of Water Rights. He lives here locally, and he knows water rights as good as anybody else. The other one is a fellow named John Maybe. Mr. Maybe is an attorney. He used to, he cut his teeth in the AG's office. He was assigned to the Division of Water Rights. So he might be able to provide us a bigger scope of services than Mr. Carpenter, especially if we're looking at, A, water rights, and then B, some sort of resolutions to a dispute. Mr. Maybe's office costs more than Mr. Carpenter's office. Mr. Carpenter, I think he was at a hundred and, 150 an hour. Mr. Maybe's office ranges between 250 and 275 an hour. Personally, I'd recommend that we go with Mr. Maybe's office due to the broader scope of services he could possibly provide.
It seems to me there could be some legal issues involved in this, and anybody that's got that attorney background, I think is going to be to our benefit, because if we're talking 115 or so, the difference, acre feet of water, I mean, we're talking 500 to $700,000 difference. And so if we need to pay someone, you know, $5,000, $10,000, it's, it's well worth it in the long run for this, on the city's behalf, to have that kind of representation, I believe.
I, I had two clarifying questions. Just for reference, I, I was aware of how much water the city had interest in, but what wasn't clear to me was how much water MJB is still holding as part of this. As, as far as, because, because we were-
So that would have been in your packet last week. If the declaration doesn't go through and the water right continues to represent what it represented yesterday, or today, I think they would have somewhere in the neighborhood of 600 acre feet. If the declaration does go through and changes the nature of that water right, I think they're in the ballpark of, was it 230?
Give me two seconds.
It was about 801 acre feet, seems like.
Oh, there we go.
They broke my glasses, so I can't, yeah, keep going down the model.
Let's keep going. But luckily for you, but.
So if the declaration does go through, they would have 191.
And then, would this, if, if we were okay with signing off on the partial determination, is there a restriction on future sale of rights until we figure everything else out?
We haven't proposed that yet. But if you would like us to propose that, we could propose that. I mean, that's got to be an agreed-upon term. It's not something we can mandate.
Right. No, I understand that. I don't know how the rest of the council feels. It's, and I don't know how long this process will take, but.
Me neither.
You know, I, I just don't know. Well, and with this process, if there are more shares sold before we figure things out, are we going to have to be signing off on future sales as well until we get things settled out? That's my main concern.
If we agree to the partial determination so these other folks can move forward, could we ask for that agreement in exchange that they wouldn't sell anymore under this water user certificate?
I would be happy to ask them anything that you guys direct me to ask them.
Because I, I think that's a great point, that we don't want them to sell those 191 shares before we work this out.
So is that, is that a motion, Councilwoman Hartley, that you would like to propose?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we move forward with an offer to MJB that we would agree to a partial determination for those four individual water share owners to move forward.
Five.
Five.
Oh, is it five? Okay. And in exchange for them moving forward on that, that they agree not to sell any additional water shares under that water user certificate number, what is it, 73-140?
73-140.
Until we make a final determination on the water.
And?
Do you want two motions, or do you want just one?
Do you want to-
Fine. One's fine.
And that we also hire Mr. Maisy to work through the water determination for us.
I would second that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need those. All right. Item number 16, ranked choice voting presentation.
Hello, council members, mayor, city staff. Do we? Oh, we've got it up there.
Stan, you still have to say, will you say your first and last name, just for the record?
I will. My name's Stan Lockhart. I am, I'm a director at Utah Rank Choice Voting. I'm a former chairman of the Utah Republican Party, former Provo City Council member, former member of the State Board of Education, and I'm, my late wife Becky was the only woman to ever be Speaker of the House in the state. So it's a delight that I could be with you this evening. Twenty-five years ago, conservative grassroots activists brought ranked choice voting to the state of Utah. And they brought it to the Republican Party. And I was a part of the establishment. And if you know anything about grassroots activists and the establishment, we don't tend to get along very well. So anything they were in favor of, I was opposed to. And that went on for some time, and then we started using ranked choice voting in our conventions and in our caucus meetings. And over a period of time, I just used the scientific method. I just kept observing how it worked, and it worked so well. It took 10-hour conventions into about three or four-hour conventions. And I looked at how easy it was for the voters, for the delegates, to cast their vote. And you didn't have to worry about them needing to leave later in the day, because they were able to do it all in one shot. And over time, I became a believer in ranked choice voting. Now, you need to know something. There is no perfect method of voting. So there are strengths and weaknesses of ranked choice voting, just like there are strengths and weaknesses of what I call plurality voting, or first past the post, that we traditionally use. But I would argue that ranked choice voting is better in many ways, particularly for cities. So let's go ahead and get started with this. Let me tell you how ranked choice voting works. So voters rank candidates in their order of preference on the ballot. We've discovered with other cities doing this over the last few years, that it's very intuitive, that it's not hard to figure out how to rank your votes. And we have about the same amount of spoilt ballots under ranked choice voting that we have under plurality voting. So those first voter choices are counted, and if someone gets over 50% of the votes, they're the winner. If no one gets over 50% of the, of the votes, then you go back to the original tabulation. You take the person who received the fewest votes, and you take them off the equation. Then the number two votes of their supporters are counted and, and distributed, and we go through the same process again. Did a candidate get over 50% of the votes? And that process continues until you get a candidate who gets over 50%. In multi-winner races, and I don't know, I'm guessing that you're, you might have some multi-winner races for council seats, it's the same exact process. You go through this process and you find a winner. Then you take that candidate off the, off the ballot, and you go through the same process again for the remaining candidates, until you have two or three winners, depending on what year it is. So that's the way ranked choice voting works. Let's go to the next slide. So we passed legislation three years ago in the state legislature that allowed this pilot. The legislature is interested in using this in partisan elections, if it works well with Utah voters. And the way that they thought they could test and, and figure out how Utah voters responded was by asking cities to do it. And so that's why cities are the ones that are, that have the ability to opt in. And, and so Payson and Vineyard took us up on the offer two years ago. I call them my, the ranked choice voting pioneers of the state. They had very successful elections. When the election was over, the county clerk in Utah County sent out a survey to those who had voted. Eighty-two and a half percent of the voters not only liked ranked choice voting, they wanted to do it again. They felt like it was a fuller expression of their will, that they could freely vote for the person they liked the most. And then they could freely vote for the person they liked the second most. And they didn't have to do these games in their head. Well, gee, if, if I don't vote for that person, the person I dislike the very most might win. Or other mathematical calculations that our voters many times have to go through in plurality elections. And so 87% of candidates said, we really like this, and we hope you'll use it again. And so overwhelming support amongst both voters and candidates for ranked choice voting in Payson and Vineyard. And by the way, those two cities are very different. So Payson's one of our homestead cities from the time our state was created. A lot of multi-generational families who live there, and a lot of older voters. Vineyard's the fastest-growing city in America between 2010 and 2020. They went from a few hundred residents to over 10,000 residents. And so they had a lot of younger voters. But the response from, on those surveys were about the same in both cities. Once you, until you use ranked choice voting, you're kind of skeptical. Once you use it, you like it. It's just that simple. Let's go to the next slide. So, yeah, so this just goes, goes back to what we're talking about. We, we really asked several questions in that clerk's survey to try to dig into, to, to what the voter experience was like. We've got great data around the country, but we want to see how do our voters here in Utah respond to it. Let's go to the next slide. Yeah, we've gone through the candidates. Let's keep going. So in 2020, the state legislature recognized the success in the 2019 municipal pilot, albeit a very small success, only two cities out of 248. And they, and they commended Payson and Vineyard for their participation. And they also, in their resolution, encouraged all cities and towns statewide to use ranked choice voting in their municipal elections. Next slide. So last week, at the end of the legislative session, the Utah Legislature passed House Bill 75, which just simply clarifies and improves our, our pilot. There are three things that that bill did. Number one, it allows cities to opt in and use counties outside of their own county to run their, their election if they so desire. The second thing it did is it reinforced the fact that the legislative body makes the decision on ranked choice voting and sends the resolution to the Lieutenant Governor's Office and to the county clerk. And the third thing it does is it allows cities more time. We had until April 15th, and now they have till May 10th, to make a decision on whether or not to use ranked choice voting. So those are the three things in the legislative session. Next slide. We've gone through that. Next slide. So here, here are some of the benefits of ranked choice voting for cities. Number one, you only have to have one election. Cities are charged on a per-registered voter basis. So you pay the same for your primary as you do for the general election, by and large. And with ranked choice voting, you're able to save half the cost of that election. You're also, it also makes for a shorter period of time. So instead of signs going up the beginning of summer and lasting all the way through November, everything kind of starts up in September or October. And it's less expensive and less time commitment for both candidates and for that voter fatigue that happens when you see sign after sign after sign for months upon months upon months. So that's a nice thing. And then the equipment that is used by the counties around the state is, all comes prepackaged with the ability to use ranked choice voting. In fact, it was a part of the state contract that they signed in order to fund new voting equipment over the last three years, was that it had to handle ranked choice voting. And ESNS and Dominion, the two largest providers of election equipment in the country, both have native ranked choice voting applications. Next slide. One of the things I like the most is that voters can more fully express their will. I'm a conservative Republican, and you can be whatever you want to be, but I'm going to give you kind of my prism on why ranked choice voting makes sense to me. So when our country was founded, Ben Franklin, coming out of the Constitutional Convention, was confronted by a woman. And the woman said to me, Dr. Franklin, he said to Ben, "Dr. Franklin, what do we have? Is it a republic or a, or a monarchy?" And Franklin said, "A republic, if we, if you can keep it." And a lot of that had to do with the ability to keep citizens engaged in the election process. Thomas Jefferson once said that "an informed citizenry is the best defense against tyranny." So the founders knew that getting people not only to vote, but educated, and getting them knowledgeable about what they're voting on was incredibly important. Ranked choice voting allows that to happen. Because it's no longer okay to know that your friend of a friend's dad is running for a city council, and, you know, have to think five more seconds about it until you get your vote-by-mail ballot and fill it out. Now suddenly, you've got to figure out who's running, and you might have a number one, but who's going to be my number two? And who's going to be my number three? And so there's a greater responsibility, a greater onus on the, on the voter to do more work. And we find that by and large, they do. There's greater participation in debates and in meet-the-candidate nights, in, in website access. And so voters have more responsibility, and with that responsibility, they become more educated and more informed and more engaged in this process, and that is good. There's a winner-by-majority vote. Now, some of the critics say, well, yeah, but some don't vote for all of the choices, and so therefore you don't get a true majority sometimes. And that is very true. But I would just suggest that it's still much better than when you go in there and you're voting for one person who may only get, you know, 5% of the vote, and you feel totally disenfranchised. It eliminates the spoiler effect. So there are times where you'll look at who you're, if you're a candidate, here's some candidate strategy for all of you, whether you're running in a plurality election or a ranked choice voting election. If you know who your greatest opponent, who your most prominent opponent is, who's most likely to be your challenger, many times you'll say to yourself, who could I go recruit that would take a few votes away from that person? It, it happens all the time in partisan races, where Republicans will find a Green Party candidate in some states. Or in our state, many times, Democrats will find a, a Libertarian candidate to run against a Republican. But that's the spoiler effect. In the fourth congressional district, there were 12,000 Libertarian votes, and Burgess Owens beat Ben McAdams by like 3,000 votes. And those 12,000 votes wouldn't have changed the outcome, but it would have made a big difference on the, the stress that those candidates went through upon the election. So, so it eliminates that spoiler effect, because you can freely vote for who you want, and it doesn't penalize you- and it doesn't penalize you, as you're able to stay in the election till the very end. The other, let's go to the next slide. The other thing it does is many times there's vote splitting that happens in plurality of the elections. So you'll find that there are three candidates very similar, and there's a one-issue candidate over here. And because these three candidates split the majority of the vote, the one-issue candidate can get in with, with far less than 50% of the vote, and not truly represent the majority of the population of the constituency that they were, that they're supposed to represent. And under ranked choice voting, it gets rid of those, of those games that are played. With city councils, particularly those that have multi-winner races, here is a very popular game you play with the type of voting we have. They go tell their supporters, "Only vote for me." Statistically, it gives them an advantage. Now, those voters are disenfranchised for whoever else is running. But that, but, but, but telling your supporters to only vote for you in a city council race when there are multi-winners, gives you a statistical advantage. And most cities that I go to, everybody kind of turns and looks at the person who did that, who did that exact strategy. Ranked choice voting gets rid of that game. And so it gets rid of games, really, is what I would tell you. So, here are the steps. I've already kind of laid it out for you, but you need to make a determination on whether you'd like to participate with ranked choice voting this year. Then you'd, then you'd want to vote on a resolution to do so. You would then send that to the lieutenant governor and to the county clerk. You'd provide that written notice by May 10th, and, and then it will just be for this municipal cycle. So two years from now, you've got to make a new choice on what you want to do. And I believe that's the end of my presentation.
So is the Utah County Clerk, apparently the only county clerk that's administering these types of elections?
She is the, I believe the answer is yes, although you'd have to go ask your county clerk.
We can ask, hey, John!
We like, we really like our county clerk, and we want him to be in charge.
I didn't want to speak for you.
I just have a question why he's passing those out. You mentioned that you have three similar candidates who, who may be similar in views, and you have the outlier, but couldn't that happen anyway? Even in ranked choice voting, if I only vote for one, even though I could vote for four, I'm still giving an advantage to that, to me or whoever that person is, that's running?
You, you don't give them a statistical advantage. There's no advantage to the voter or to the candidate to only vote for one, under ranked choice voting.
I did, I had a couple questions too on the, so, first of all, I know this is new to Utah, but nationwide has, has been around, so there are some studies. How does this impact, I think one, one of the concerns when we're, when we're talking about voting is, is we have, how does this impact kind of the diversity of opinions? Is ranked choice voting going to lead us down a path where we have a very homogeneous elected body? Or is this something that encourages diverse viewpoints? What is the impact on that? And I know it's hard to define those things.
Yeah, I think it's agnostic. So, the will of the majority of the citizens will determine who is elected. Right? So if you have, if you have citizens who would prefer a, someone who can, who campaigns on their limited government conservative credentials, and, and your citizens are in favor of limited government, government conservative credentials, the candidate who best reflects the will of those, of those voters is the one who's going to win. Whereas, like I mentioned, there's, there's things that happen in plurality elections that may make it so that doesn't happen. So I would just tell you that if you have a center-left group of voters, then a center-left candidate's going to win. If you have a center-right group of voters, then your center-right candidates are going to win. But really, it's, it, it allows them, it allows for the candidates that have the broadest and deepest support to be elected.
I don't see how that's different than now. The person, the candidate has the broadest, most base of support, is going to be the winner.
I've just explained some of those games that are played with plurality voting.
I know you've explained them, but I, I haven't, I haven't witnessed that here in our community.
It, it's fairly common. So if you have, let's say you have three brothers running. They all have the same profession, let's say they all work on the family farm. They all go to the same church, they're all members of the same service club, they're all very, very similar, and they're all running for mayor of this city. And let's say you have somebody out there who's a newcomer, and has determined that something happening in the city is not to their liking. Many times, you could have each one of those brothers split the vote, and someone with 25 or 30% of the vote can slip in. That can't happen under ranked choice voting. The second, the, if one of those brothers goes out, then their votes cascade up. And, and so it almost guarantees that the person who represents the majority of the people ends up getting elected.
All right. Let's let John speak, and then we might have more questions.
This might be the most nervous I've ever been to speak. I am, I am very displeased to be here right now.
But you still have to say your name, even though you don't want to be with us.
Well, you know, in, in our meetings, I always ask, have to ask people to come to the microphone. So I am John Whitaker, I'm the Iron County Clerk.
Thank you, John.
And I have cotton mouth. I feel just like before a wrestling match.
All right. Take down.
We'll see. Probably me. Okay, so, when, when SB 75 left, or HB 75 left the House, I was concerned about the constitutionality of it. And, and I really don't like to be saying this with the sponsor of it sitting behind It, when it, before a substitute in the Senate, it required cities to use the county clerk in the county in which they were in. I think it's important to have context as well, that the Clerk's Association, I've never, and until today, honestly, I've been pretty agnostic on ranked, ranked choice. And right now, I'm, I'm pretty annoyed. I've been agnostic on it. I actually asked Casey Anderson to come, I wasn't sure if he was going to make it. He has one of the most pure arguments for ranked choice voting, which is to say, it's very, for him, one of the fundamental things is that you don't win with a plurality, but with a majority. I, I accept that. I've always been, I've always been on the fence about it, but I've never seen the clerk group so concerned during a legislative session. And HB 75 was at the top of the list for things that concerned us. I don't disagree with what Representative Lockhart has said on, on the ways that it can affect voting. As I've put in front of you, sorry, Mayor, I'll get you one. We actually recommended that there might be other ways to be able to accomplish some of those goals of, of kind of getting away from the hyper-partisanship. In my conversations with Senator Vickers, he felt like ranked choice voting, or some of these alternative voting methods, would, would really be a lot more applicable in a partisan race, say like county commission, because, you know, you get those multiple candidates, and it really would make a difference on the hyper-partisanship. Now, we, we also, we're concerned about ranked, I'm going to, I'm kind of flustered. Ranked choice voting is a pilot, and it's, oh, sorry. We have, ranked choice voting has been used in the Iron County Republican Convention for some time and with some success. It really works well in, in some of those small groups. But we, as clerks, have some grave concerns about what happens if there's a recount? What happens if, if there's a lawsuit? Right now, I can defend every single vote that's cast. In ranked choice voting, we gather up all the votes, and then we run them through this algorithm. And I can't think of any way to say it, and this is the, this is the same verbiage I used when I wrote to Representative Last, Representative Ship, Senator Vickers, and I said, "When I try to defend this to my constituents, it's going to sound like voodoo." Because we, we take all the results, and we throw them into a black box, and then it gives us a result. And part of the reason I'm upset, I literally just verified this as we sat here, let me back up. Election system and software, ESNS, is our supplier, and they're able to support a vote for one race. So they would be able to vote, they'd be able to support ranked choice voting in a, in a mayoral race, or a vote-for-one setting, right? They don't have the ability to do a vote for more than one right now. Man, I've got cotton mouth. So, in the Payson and Vineyard elections, what was used was a third-party software. It was a third-party, open-source software. And, and that is what's got me upset. I cannot believe that we would use an open-source software for something as critical as voting. How do we guarantee that that software hasn't been tampered with? In a year where, where a company like Dominion has been eviscerated, we're depending on that. What we asked for as clerks to the legislature was to, to tap the brakes, and to just give some consideration to a study. We've already been working with Lieutenant Governor's Office as a group, to be able to, because we're not necessarily diametrically opposed, well, let me rephrase that. I'm not. Most of my cohorts are, because of the reasons I've been talking about. But what we don't know is, we don't have a study. You know, I'll, I'll talk about one of my favorite alternatives to this, which is approval voting. You would, on approval voting, all of the council member candidates would be listed, it would be like a judicial retention election. And you just say, "I like this one, I don't like this one, I like this one, I don't like this one." And it would be, it would, it would provide many of those same benefits that ranked choice voting does, in terms of helping to get past some of the hyper-partisanship, some of the gamesmanship that happens. And all you do is, you get a yay or a nay as a candidate. And then all I have to do is, "Thank you so much." I used to wrestle with Officer Carter.
He's in the other room there.
If he could come in and bang me on the head a few, a few times, I'd be doing a little I haven't been this nervous in I don't know how long. Where was I?
We're among friends, John.
No, it's okay. I, no, I just don't like to be this antagonistic. And I'm, so, and approval voting, basically I can tally up all the yay votes and whoever gets the most. And so you, you still have an opportunity to have a winner by majority, which, to Casey Anderson's point, that's one of those fundamental things that you're winning by a plurality, not a majority. I think it also would help with, like I say, those hyper-partisan, you know, partisan races, and some of the gamesmanship that can be played, especially on city council races. But we haven't talked about that. And what we've asked for as clerks is just give, give some time to, to study this properly. There are runoff voting, runoff options, that, you know, and, and I'll, as you can see, there's these different systems, but, so as far as that goes, and I, to, to Representative Lockhart's point, the city can use ranked choice voting. I can support a vote-for-one scenario, but I can't do more than that right now. It does, it would save you the, the cost of doing another election, but it would cost an additional $7,500, so on the net, you'd be a little bit lower. I think you've been closer to $18,000, $20,000 per election. And so, it would be, it would be a net savings as far as dollars. I do want to point out that Representative, or that Councilmember Fred Rowley, now, in a ranked choice setting, he might have won anyway, but in the primary, he squeaked by and barely made it on his last election in, or maybe it was his first, but he won handily in the general. And I think philosophically, this has been probably one of my only philosophical resistances to ranked choice voting, and that is to say, this, another name for ranked choice voting is instant runoff voting. And that's because, or instant, yeah, instant, what do they call it? Thank you. And, and so it allows you to kind of do it all in one shot. And, and I think there's some virtue in that. But I also like the idea of being able to deliberate over the candidates. And so, for me, philosophically, and in fact, I'll just, when I was running for clerk, we, we did it the bad old days, where, where we had multiple rounds. I didn't even know you were going to give a second speech? Oh my heck. So I was prepared for one three-minute speech, not this second speech, and we'd been there all day. And, and I thought, "I'm going to not talk, I'm going to talk about riding my bike as a kid, and how I learned how to do things." And I told a very entertaining thing, but it was in that second round of deliberation that, that I was able to, to win. And so for me personally, and I think for, you know, you know, situations like Fred Rowley's, I think, I think there is something to be said for that second round of deliberation I think actually I'm a little bit out of my lane when I talk about that. And my fellow clerks would disagree. I, I had this conversation with Rex, and I was pretty pointed with, sorry, Representative It's my friend. But I said, "When it comes to philosophical matters, we, the clerks, darn well ought to listen to you. But when it comes to matters of technological things, and being able to defend the process, you darn well ought to listen to us." And the reason I'm standing before you shaking, is because I feel like that hasn't happened. Representative Lockhart is very powerful. I, I got in trouble with my group last week, because I, I made an analogy. I said, "You know, ranked choice voting is like, like a pickle popsicle." And we're standing there, we're the mom in the kitchen, right? Kid says, "Hey, we want to do a pickle popsicle." "You what? We want to do a pickle popsicle, Mom." "Okay." So we get the ice tray out, we get the, the stick, and we put, we help them get it in the fridge, and we're like, "You're not going to like this." And, and, you know, we make the pickle popsicle for them. And I said, "Look, maybe what we ought to do as a group," you know, because we were having a, we, we, we have calls to try to figure out how we're going to respond to what the legislature's doing. I said, "Maybe what we ought to do, instead of try to fight this, if, if Representative Lockhart is, is more powerful than we are, and we can't get our point made, then maybe what we ought to do is, is posture." And man, you'd have thought, I, I got ran out of there, and it was, and it was a Zoom But I will say, I think there are grave concerns that the county clerks have. We have one county that's gone toward that, and we're not, we support them, we enjoy having them in our meetings, we're not, you know, no antagonism toward them. But, from a technological perspective, from our ability to defend the results perspective, to defend the process, that's very scary for us. I had, I'm not going to say his name, but one of my, one of my peers was, in his frustration, said, "Well, what we ought to do is get the business card for every one of those legislators and put it on our front desk." And his point being is, when a voter's frustrated, they don't call the legislature, they call their county clerk. And, and when we feel like something is being forced upon us, you know, we're in a position to diplomatically explain, you know, the process. And right now, I feel like defending the results, defending a close election, and defending the process, and defending my constituents, gets very difficult with this. So, that being said, I don't diametrically oppose it. I can't support anything but vote for one right now. I would recommend that you not go with the Utah County solution, because it's open source. That just blows my mind. And I've only found, I've only been able to verify that in the last hour.
So if we went this way, you could not run our elections, and the only place could be the open-source Utah County, as of right now?
I, I could run the election, but I couldn't give you the results. I have to, all I could do is-
Then what's the good of you running the election?
Pardon?
Then what's the good of you running the ele-
Touche. I, but, and, and this is a minor thing. I, I think, I talked to several people this afternoon, and one guy's like, "Well, you need to tell them that the only thing they're going to get is a spreadsheet full of numbers." And I'm like, "Well, we can make a spreadsheet full of numbers turn into a pretty result." And I'm like, well, we can make a spreadsheet full of numbers turn into pretty results. But, but yeah, it would, what we would have to do is take those results and give them to somebody else. And again, how do I defend that? You know, currently, and I want to point this out. Currently, we have layers of encryption. We have computers that never see the outside internet. We have, we have physical and technological, you know, protections that are light years ahead of what we had even just five years, four years ago. And we're going to take all that and then we're going to run it through an open-source, you know, algorithm. And I think maybe we could get there. But the refinement isn't there yet. And we're very, as a group of clerks, very nervous about this. And so, and when we say that, because I think one of the arguments that was made was, well, the clerks don't feel like they can administer it. And truly, we can. We can, we can set up those ballots. We can, we can, we can print the ballots. We can. I think there is a valid concern in an even-numbered year for a general election that we may actually have, because a ranked choice layout is much larger, it's possible that we would have to have multiple ballots per, like, we can go up to a 19-inch ballot front and back, but that may not be big enough in a ranked choice election. And that's been one of my concerns is, I do not want to be in a situation where each voter has to have two ballots. And I have to somehow keep a chain of custody on two separate ballots for each voter. And so.
Can I ask one other question?
Yes, and I'm, I'll stop ranting.
With us, with this upcoming election,
Yes.
we have a ballot initiative. How does all of this play in with that? Is it just the normal?
A ballot initiative would, yes, it would be an up or down vote. Yep.
And it doesn't?
Yeah.
So it's not structured any different?
Judicial retention or just yes and no. Yeah.
Okay, on the-
Yeah.
That's also ranked choice. You pick yes or no first and then, then your other one second, right?
Correct. Yeah, the first round of ranked choice, if a candidate has more than 50%, you don't actually go through the algorithm, which is a good point.
Okay, that was, I mean, we need, where that's a consideration, we need to make sure that there's not confusion with that aspect either in this upcoming.
Yeah, and I think the voter education piece is important. The, for the Payson and Vineyard election, there was, per voter, a tremendous amount of money and it was a pilot, put into voter education. In a broader sense, I think it was $400,000 statewide that they had set aside for a voter education. And of course, that's always one of our goals, is to be able to have an educated voter. But we do need to have, we need to say, well, this race is different, you know, and it's not unsurmountable. But, you know, there are a bunch of ways to screw up a ballot and we see all of them. So, and I, I want to, I want to just, I want to talk about one last thing, and this is how I ended my letter to the legislators. We make every effort to try to maintain election integrity and voter confidence. And one of our gravest concerns with ranked choice voting is if you have a multi-county race, if you have a close race, if you're looking at a recount, how do we audit it? How do I even tell an individual what, who they voted for? Because it got ran through the algorithm. Every one of those things has the potential to whittle away the confidence in the system that we have worked so hard to maintain. You know, 2020 was a, there's no other way to put it, it was a very rough year for election folks. The legislature said thank you to the election people and I think that's appropriate. I'm always amazed that I can be around them. But I worry that this may undermine voter confidence if we have issues that come up. And maybe we won't. Hopefully, I'm wrong. But, but my, I just look at it, and right now I know how to defend every part of what I do. This takes a lot of that away from me. Any other questions?
Maybe in a minute. Thanks, John.
Yeah, I won't leave.
Stan?
I already like John. This is the first time I've ever met him.
You do have to say your name again?
Stan Lockhart.
Thank you.
I can certainly understand why county clerks will be hesitant. It's brand new. It's a change. They, they care a lot about election integrity. They view themselves as the stewards of good elections and I totally get it. We had a county clerk who was elected in 2018, who ran a 2019 ranked choice voting election. It was the very first election she ever ran. She had about 18 cities using plurality voting. She had two cities using ranked choice voting. And it went flawlessly, fully auditable. The particular tabulator that John mentioned is certified by the federal government and the state as being able to be used in our elections. And so it's, it's not open source in the sense that it's going to be hacked into. It's already been tested. It's been verified that it is a, it is approved for use in the state of Utah. And they're not going to approve something that isn't secure. And so it's true, on those multi-winner races, there's a two-step process instead of a one-step process. It still goes through the ESNS system. Then it goes to something called this universal tabulator. By the way, that tabulator, a tabulator similar to that is used in multi-county races and partisan races where you have representatives across boundaries. So there's already, we already have in our state during partisan races, a two-step process. And that's all this is, is a two-step process. And it's not that difficult to use and it is fully auditable, which means that you can go back and see exactly how you achieved the outcomes that you received. And so I would just suggest that if you decided to move forward, you would have efforts, the same type of support that those last two cities had, where you have people from the state helping you. You'll have Utah County helping him. He'll have numerous resources at his disposal, including some money for voter education that has been reserved by the legislature for cities who choose to do ranked choice voting. So I believe that most of his concerns will be largely non-existent once he digs into it. But I can certainly see that if he went to a group of county clerks that already oppose it to get his information, why he would have gotten information that would scare him a little bit and make him a little bit uncomfortable. If you just go to talk to Amelia Powers at Utah County, though, in her very first election that she administered, she ran it flawlessly and the voters loved it.
Mr. Lockhart, I have a question for you right here, right here.
Sure.
In this pilot program, what is the state hoping? Do they want to get 30 cities? Do they want to get 40? What is their goal?
There isn't a specific number, but here's what, here's the deal. If you read the front page of the Salt Lake Tribune today, it's got a big article on a meeting at the governor's office, the last weekend of the session, talking about election reform. Our leaders in the state want to have the very best elections possible, just like our county clerks do. But they are, but they're aware that there are things that have happened in our elections recently that have maybe not caused the best outcomes. And I'll give you an example. Because of multiple paths to the ballot, we had four candidates running for two congressional districts and the governor's seat. And the winners of those, in one of the congressional seats, they got 30.9% of the vote. Is 30.9% the will of the people? That's the question. I mean, the person who got elected is a great person. Is 30.9% the will of the people? In the governor's race, 36.5% won that race. Is 36.5% the will of the Republicans to have that person on the ballot? I don't know what the answer is. I know it doesn't have to be 50%. But I'm not sure that if it's less than a third, that we can say that that's a good election. Ranked choice voting would have solved that problem. The winner would have gotten 50%, more than 50% of the voter will out of that election. And we would have known that, that while they may not have been the first choice, they were still a choice of the majority of the voters in that election. And so there's seriously, the legislature wants to know how ranked choice voting works with Utah voters. They want to know how we perceive it. They, they want to get as much data as possible. And if all they have is Utah County, that's not great. I mean, they can know how Utah County feels, how Utah County voters respond, but they won't know how Iron County voters respond. And that is the purpose in doing it. They're very serious about election reform. I wouldn't be the least bit surprised if we have some reform next year. Once the, once the, the passion of the 2020 election is well into our rearview mirror. And so, and so your city could be a big help to the state as they seek to find the very best election methods to use for the citizens of our state.
So Stan, where, I mean, you just kind of led into my question. So for our community, where 2020 is still fresh on people's minds with everything that happened and the uncertainty with the election, why would our county and our city right now want to be a pilot child? Other than the state wants some pilots, why would we want to put our residents through something where they don't know? I mean, there would be some questions. There could be concerns that our county clerk addressed as far as verifying results and all that. I know that you said it can all be done, but why would we want to be the pilot at this year at this time?
Yeah, I think, I think the answer to that question is that the city is looking for the very best possible election experience for the residents of the city. And if we go look at the merits and the weaknesses of ranked choice voting compared to plurality voting, I think you can make a strong case that your residents will have a better experience using ranked choice voting. For all the reasons that I've already said.
I have a couple more things. Sorry to keep you for a while. The, writing my third thought. Okay, so first of all, if we decided, John did bring up a good point that was one of my concerns. Even though it saves money to do just one election, our primary is still an option. If we feel that that gives the best experience, whether for meet the candidates or narrowing the field from 40 down to two or three, or, you know, we'll see how many, right? Who knows? Our primary is still an option. So that's my first question.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Could I, could I expand on that just a second? So if you decided that you wanted to use ranked choice voting, but that you weren't, but to your point, that you wanted to, you wanted the voters to have an experience that made them comfortable with what they've done in the past. You could use ranked choice voting in a primary, narrow it down to the number of people you need to have a general election for and then still have a general election. You wouldn't save the money of the primary, but you would still have the experience that you could get, we could gather some data from. And that's in statute. In fact, we put that in statute for a city that specifically wants to do that.
Where they want to do ranked choice on the primary, but not the general. Interesting. Number two would be, I do, and this is more just a philosophical thing. I have a little bit more trouble with going this year, just because I, and I think, I talked to John, there's John. I talked to John about this, I don't know, maybe nine months ago or something like that, as something that if we want to look at, we should probably do it before the new year, this last year. Just because, you know, come January, people start announcing that they're going to run and I don't want us being viewed as manipulating the election system in any way. If we, if we did do it this year, I would feel more comfortable with doing a primary with this system and leaving the general as is. And anyway, I need to give that some more thought. The third, and just really frankly, is the legislature's willingness to suddenly, you know, explore the system that was only used by the, by the wacky people on the extremes, right? Is, is the legislature's willingness to entertain this and even promote this kind of a way out of addressing some of the issues that we had when we changed the way that parties run their primaries? Without having to reverse those decisions or? So I guess politically, where is this coming from as far as tying into some of the party politics? And some of the problems we saw last year as a result of those policies?
Yeah, so I'm pretty familiar with the motivation behind why the legislature is trying to do this. I believe they are sincere in their intent to figure out if this is something that can help improve elections. I don't think there's an intent to try to do a backdoor on Senate Bill 54, if you remember that nomenclature. And but I do think that as the legislature keeps considering different alternatives in how to run elections, they would love to have more data. Because so often we make decisions, even at the city level, when I was on a city council, it's more emotional in nature. We just have a severe lack of data in front of us and we have to kind of make a call based on our, what we believe in and kind of the, kind of at the moment of what is practical. And, and this allows us to have that hard data. And, and so we don't have to worry. So what, what happened in the legislature was that for years, legislators kept bringing forward ranked choice voting. And finally, in 2017, I believe, the House passed overwhelmingly the use of ranked choice voting in most elections in the state. It got to the Senate and the Senate got into committee and it looked like it was going to pass. And they're trying to figure out, wait a second, we got to put the brakes on this thing. And so on a three-to-three vote, it failed in committee. And then began my discussions with our state senate leaders and members of that body in terms of, what are we trying to do? Why are we trying to do it? And that's how we came up with the city pilot. It's because they truly want data on voter behavior in Utah. And we've got a little bit. I mean, those two cities gave us some data that's, and you saw that it's very, very positive. But two cities out of 248? Right?
Need a lot more data.
Yeah, so, so again, I, I think they're sincere in their efforts. I don't think they're trying to do a backdoor. I think they're looking at comprehensive reform that will address the issue that you're concerned about.
And I do think, and the only issue I really have with, with John's information that came out, I do think on the, to the extent I've looked into this and to the extent that locally I've heard support on it, it really comes down to the civility issue that even though there are still games you can play, even though there are, anyway, if somebody is campaigning negatively, there's no, they lose out. They have no incentive to do it. Now, there are arguments that maybe you want that kind of campaigning and maybe arguments against. But again, it's all philosophical. But I do think that rather than being inconclusive, based on the nationwide data, the civility really is helped out significantly on, well, civility as far as overt statements. Now, how we feel about that and where we stand philosophically, it's, it definitely gives us more warm fuzzies about the election process. But whether the outcome is better or worse, or anything from that, I don't know. And I need to study that a little more. But I appreciate the insights and information.
I had a handout. Is there any way we can make sure that that handout gets to council members? Okay. Because that talks about the civility issue and how there's a built-in incentive to be more civil amongst candidates. Because if I go attack you and say a bunch of things that are untrue, I'm never getting your voters' number twos. And so there's kind of this built-in incentive to try to, to try to, for candidates to be more civil with each other and at the same time, focus more on issues. That is good for our country and it actually goes to kind of your point, Mayor. Where you, at a time where there's increased polarization, at a time when there's increased division amongst the people of this country and amongst candidates when they're running for office, here's an opportunity to just dial down the, the politics of personal destruction and to have candidates incented to focus more on the issues and the future of Cedar City.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't need to vote on this tonight.
No.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I ask you a question before he vacates?
Sure. No, we're not voting. It was just a matter of, I need, we needed to get this information in front of the council. So you had time to digest it and think about it and all of that, where there's different deadlines.
Well, I think we've got the information.
All right.
Well, I get, Tom Jett, I guess what my question is, is two questions. One, other states are doing this. How many states have reversed themselves and gone back to the original way that they were doing it prior to switching to ranked choice? And did you have that kind of factual information? And did you have that kind of factual information? If not, in your mind, but someplace where we can access such information? And, and question number two, this is a cynical question, but it's not meant to be cynical. Who is funding this organization to, I mean, there's always follow the money and that. It's not pointed towards you, it's not meant to be negative, but who is funding this, this cause to, to move this direction? And again, it's not meant cynical or to point fingers in any corrupt way. Thank you.
There are over a dozen states that currently use ranked choice voting in, um, city elections. There are two states that are using ranked choice voting in their statewide elections. Maine is one, and Alaska just decided to do it this past election cycle, so the next cycle Alaska will be doing it too.
Mandated or choice?
Well, on the Alaska vote, it was a citizen initiative, actually on the Maine vote, it was a citizen initiative as well. Um, so it's coming from the citizens of the state.
All right, thank you.
In terms of funding, I am a director at Utah Ranked Choice Voting. We are a 501(c)(3) and we have a 501(c)(4). We have a board of about five people, um, former legislators, uh, and, um, a state, a former state elections director are on our board. We receive some funding from a couple of national sources. Uh, one of those sources is the Arnold Foundation. The Arnold Foundation, uh, is out of Texas, and, uh, a billionaire, um, wanted to create a foundation and work on big issues that are foundational to the future of our country. And, um, and so that's, that's one of our funding sources. Another funding source is called, is Unite America. And that's, and that organization is run by the Murdoch family, the same Murdoch family that owns Fox News. And so those are our two funding sources, uh, from outside the state. And then we have a whole bunch of donors from inside the state who give to Utah Ranked Choice Voting.
Thank you much. All right. Any final comments? You're standing back there, John.
Sure, I'll say a couple more things. I'll sit down.
You still have to say your name again, though.
My name is John Whitaker. I'm the Iron County Clerk. So the answer is, uh, Colorado, Washington, and Eagle, Colorado had ranked choice voting and went away from it. I just, just for, I, I, now I'm, I feel compelled to defend myself just a little, just to say, I was not bamboozled into thinking ranked choice voting wasn't good. I am the president of the Clerks Association of Utah, and I think for myself, thank you very much. Also, to, to make the argument that I don't have the technical prowess to do this, I do. My concerns lie in, um, protecting my constituents and defending the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so we will, you guys can just continue to think about this over the next little while, and we can bring it back.
Before we, sorry, if I may, um, if this is something we want to entertain, I would suggest we look at it as soon as possible rather than later, just because I don't want us to be, i- if we're gonna change anything about this year's election cycle, I don't want this body to be seen as trying to thwart the outcome or anything like that. So a- as we get closer to summer time.
Well, May 10th, we have to do this by May 10th.
Right, so May 10th is our ultimate deadline, but maybe this is something over the next even three weeks or so, if, 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 if we want to entertain the idea of doing this year, just because I don't know who's gonna be announcing or, or, I, I just don't want us to be seen as, as interfering.
And to, to that point, this is John Whitaker again. Uh, I, I completely agree with that, and I think, um, the sooner, if the city decides to go this direction, I think the sooner we can start with a public education piece, um, the better, and I, and I certainly support that, so.
Appreciate your efforts, John.
Any other questions for me? I kinda sat down abruptly.
Hey, can we get that list for me, John? Your, your printout?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay.
Mayor, before we move on to the next, the last, final agenda item, can I just have a moment of personal privilege? I would like to recognize that in the House we have Representative Ship with us tonight, and I think the last time I saw you on Facebook, you were down in spring training camp, so welcome home, sir.
Good day.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking all of our texts and calls during the session. Uh, all right, we will move to item 17, Municipal Officers and Employees Ethics Acts in Utah. Open and Public Meeting Act Training.
Hey, this is why everyone stayed.
You can all leave.
Hey, Tom needs to stay.
So, um, Mr. Romerel.
It's on my agenda when I stay.
The, I, I think this, today was the first time, uh, in my time on the council where the prayer thanked the attorneys. Is this event why, or?
Is this what?
I just never, i- is this event, this training, why we were, you know, being thanked?
That could have been it.
It's just, you know, the, the first.
There was some discussion before the meeting began as to how many attorneys were here.
The, uh.
So he felt compelled to molest the attorney.
I, I see, 'cause I, you know, the, the first responders get all.
Hey, do we need to hold off before Councilwoman Hartley's here, but she's here?
Luckily.
The first responders get all the blessings, and so I, I was just glad to get some blessings for once, so. That was solicited.
Luckily, it's snowing outside and not raining, or we may have had lightning strike. All right, so, um, kinda sticking with the theme of creating confidence in political bodies, we're gonna review a couple acts that we have.
Thank you for coming tonight.
That we, that we have in state law. Uh, the first we'll go through is the Open and Public Meeting Act. So the whole crux behind the Open and Public Meeting Act is that when a political body gets together to make decisions, they deliberate and they vote in front of the public. That's the key, uh, to the entire act. So in order to accomplish that, there's certain things that we'll review quickly. First is, before we have a public meeting, we provide public notice. That's, uh, posted 24 hours before the meeting. The agenda needs to include the date, time, place, and the meeting, the topics that we're gonna cover, and we also post that on the public notice website. And we provide it to a local newspaper. So a public meeting is a gathering of a corm where we are going to either debate or discuss, receive public feedback, or make a decision based on a topic that the government body oversees, or jurisdiction that the government body has. So a, a chance gathering of three of the city council members, a chance social gathering would be just fine. But that social gathering could turn into a violation if you start, the three of you started debating a public issue that's something that you're going to decide on in the city council meeting. So you'd need to just keep those conversations free of your public duties.
And could I, on, on by chance meeting, if there's another organization that's putting on an event, I mean, I know that it comes up a lot where we're like, well, do we need to make sure someone doesn't attend, or?
Yeah, no, that's just fine. You can be there.
That's totally fine.
Social gathering's fine.
It's just not discussions on policy.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Um, the meetings, and the meetings that we do have, Renan keeps minutes, and they're recorded, and they're available to the public. We need to make sure that we continue to do that process. Um, the, there is a few situations that we can get around. I shouldn't say get around. There are a few, there are a few situations where it requires the city council to act in a manner where there isn't, uh, open meeting to the public. One would be an emergency situation, some unforeseen circumstance that requires immediate action by the city council to protect the life, health, citizens of the city. If that were the case, we would post the best notice we could as soon as we could, and we would provide, you know, that to everyone that we could, but the meeting could be held in less than 24 hours. The other situation that allows us not to meet in front of the public would be a closed session. We have those, uh, to, often in our city, to talk about pending litigation that may be coming up. Uh, it's used not as often, uh, in our city, but we can discuss character of employees and their mental, uh, health and their ability to perform their job. Um, we could talk about the acquisition or sale of real property, uh, law enforcement's deployment of s- security personnel, or the investigation of alleged criminal conduct. So those are the examples of closed meetings that we have. We couldn't, you can't take an official vote in a closed meeting. You can't discuss terms of a contract in a closed meeting. Uh, you couldn't interview, uh, someone for a potential position with the city in a closed meeting. Those are all done before the public. Any questions on the Open Public Meetings Act? One part of the act, I know many of the, much of the stuff I covered is, uh, something we're very, very familiar with, but the act requires that we do this yearly, so that's one reason why we do it. All right, so the second part of the training deals with the, um, Utah's Employee, Officers and Employees Ethics Act. Essentially, the purpose of this act is that when we have individuals who are making decisions on behalf of the city, we want to make sure that their motives are as, as pure as possible. So the act really just specifies when there are conflicts and when those conflicts need to be disclosed. So essentially, there's two types of conflicts in, in this act. There's, there's a group of four that if you have those conflicts, you can't cure them. You just, you can't vote. And then there's this group of three where if you have that conflict, there is a way to cure that, and then you can vote. So we'll go through those two differences. Now, as a caveat, at the very end, I'm gonna go through a resolution that the city passed back in 2011 that encourages you never to vote in a conflict case. So let's go through where a disclosure, where you have a conflict and you cannot cure it. So the first would be, um, if you were to take, as a result of your position with the city, you're involved or you find or learn, uh, some sort of confidential information, uh, controlled or protected information, you can't use that information to benefit yourself or another. That, that stays with the city. So even though you, you can't, like, declare a conflict, let everyone know this is what you're gonna do, and then do it anyways, that's just illegal. You can't do that.
And, and I've, I've always wondered about that one, 'cause I, there's very little that we have that's confidential. I mean, everything we do is public anyways. Is that just like, is that like personnel issues, or?
It could be personnel issues. It could be like property sale issues, you know, if we have someone wanting to buy property, but we have knowledge about, I don't know, some defect about it, and we go out and spread it, or, I don't know.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, probably not the best example, but for the most part, most of our information is.
Public anyway.
Public anyways, yeah. The second si- situation is, we, you can't use your possession, your position to further your economic, um, uh, status, or that of, of another. So you don't get to use your title to get special privileges, essentially is what that says. And then the third would be gifts. So you can't receive a gift if you know, and it, it doesn't matter the value. If you're given a gift, even if it's a $1 gift, and you know the intent of that gift is to get you to vote a certain way, you can't take that. Um, or if the gift's given to you, well, yeah, you can't take it in order to vote a certain way, and, and you shouldn't, um, receive it if, if it's gonna influence your vote. If it truly would influence your vote, you wouldn't take that either.
So should I be reconsidering my Irma chocolates and golf shirts?
Those are fine, 'cause Irma's not asking you to vote in a certain way, right? Okay.
Just checking.
Okay.
Hmm.
Um, you can accept a loan if you know the terms of that loan are below fair market value, and the reason why you're getting that is because of your position. You can't receive compensation for an outside employment opportunity that, that you have if the compensation is above fair market value, and the reason why you're getting that extra is because of the position you have. You can receive some gifts, um, they should be non, non pecuniary gifts of less than $50. And there, it says occasional. The law doesn't define occasional, but it should be rare. Um, you can receive a gift as an award for your service. You can receive a gift, uh, as a bona, well, this wouldn't be a gift, but you can receive a, a bona fide loan for, you know, something that you might be doing in your private life. And you can receive political contributions. Um, if anyone tries to get one of you to violate this ethics act, they'd be guilty of a Class A misdemeanor. If you knowingly or intentionally engaged in violating this part of the act, you could be punishable anywhere from a Class B misdemeanor to a second degree felony. It's based on the value of what you receive in return for acting inappropriately.
Wow.
So. Um, so the, the second group was the, the group of four that you can have a conflict in, but as long as you disclose, then you can still move forward and, and vote on the matter. So the first would be if you received compensation for an, for assisting in a transaction with the city. Now, I try to think of examples, but I think maybe one could just be, um, if the city were, uh, selling property, and for one reason or the other, you got involved in helping the buyer, uh, 'cause you were a real estate agent, or something along those lines. If, if, if you were somehow got in that situation where you're helping out with this transaction, what you would need to do is 10 days before you either signed a contract or you received the money, whichever's earlier, you need to give a written disclosure to the mayor saying you're helping out in this transaction. And then in the city council meeting where it's actually talked about, before any discussion occurs, you would put on the record that you have a, a potential conflict here, and you're helping out with the transaction.
And that's, again, if you're trying to cure it.
If you're trying to cure it, yep. If you don't wanna cure it, then, yeah, you just have got a conflict here, and I'm not gonna participate in this discussion or vote, right? So the, the second conflict would be if you have an interest in a business that's being regulated by the city. Uh, so the example I gave last year was a taxicab. The city has an ordinance that regulates taxicab services. You'd have to have a substantial interest, which is 10%, a minimum of 10%. And the val- the total value would have to be at least over $2,000. So if you have an 80% interest in the business, but it's 1,800 bucks, that's not a conflict. Um, and again, if you wanna cure that to vote, you, you file a written disclosure with the mayor, and that's something that you all would have done when you first took office, uh, with any sort of business interest like that. If that changes while you're in office, then you'd wanna update that statement, and then you declare that at the first of the meeting before we talk about any issues before we vote. Do you have a question, Mr. Phillips?
No.
Okay. You leaned in, and I thought, okay. The, the third, the third conflict could be an interest in a business entity that's doing business with the city. So the example would be if I had a contract to do the tree trimming with the city, and I was sitting on the city council at the time. And then, and I should note for those here, this applies not only to the city council, but to appointed and, uh, city employees as well. So again, that substantial interest is 10%. Uh, in order to cure that, if you wanted to, you disclose it with the mayor in writing, and you disclose it in the first of the meeting before you restart discussion on it. And then the last would be an investment that creates a conflict. And, uh, an example there could be, uh, I thought of this today, we went to all these touchless faucets for the city, so if I had an investment in Kohler, and they had, you know, we were gonna, that's where, how we were gonna use this money as a Kohler brand, well, I'd need to disclose that in writing and disclose it before the meeting, before we issued the funds and buy that company.
Anyone who has anything in a mutual fund is gonna have some kind of issue there. Where does, where does, so is there a dollar value or substantial interest factor there, or?
It does.
You just disclose, I have a mutual fund, I don't know what's in it.
Right.
See, that's the point. I don't think, you don't even know what that mutual fund's invested in.
Yeah.
It could be invested in Kohler.
Right.
But at the end of the day.
I have no idea.
It's, it's what is in your frame of mind.
Yeah.
If you don't know, you don't know.
Right.
Right.
And I, I think that's how, that we view that, was there any sort of, uh, intent to try to benefit yourself by use, by your vote to get that investment? If, uh, that's pretty tough to prove.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't think we expect our elected officials to go through where all their investments and mutual funds might go to.
Yeah, it's in growth. I don't know what that means.
Right. Yeah.
Are most of them distributed to the mayor and the new public?
They are.
Yeah. So how, how are the new public, are they, um, printed in paper, or?
Oh, no, they're just a public document, so if the public wanted a copy, they'd do a grammar request, and we'd get that for them. Yeah. All right, so the last thing, I just, so we, that's state law, right? So in 2011, the city council passed a resolution about disclosures and recusal, recusal. The city council recognizes that members of the council and the planning commission have personal interests that may conflict with their public duties. The nature of these personal conflicts is set forth in the Municipal Officers and Employees Ethics Act. In an effort to protect the integrity of the public. In an effort to protect the integrity of the public process, prior to a discussion or vote on an item where the member of the body have a conflict between their public duties and their personal interests, said members are encouraged to disclose a conflict of interest on the record of the meeting and recuse themselves from the chambers while the item is discussed or a vote is taken. So again, that, the, the language is encouraged, it's not mandated, but state law is. So any questions on that section?
We don't exercise that very much. I, I know so many people that say they have a conflict, and they go ahead and vote anyway, and I'm not sure they should. But as you say, it's just encouraged.
Yeah. So as situations arise, situations change, you want to talk to me about something on the agenda prior to the meeting to see if you do have a conflict? My office is always open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy.
Thanks. All right.
Move to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Quick, go on.